While this be in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation follows.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Mr. Avich?
Here.
Rindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Approval of minutes from the last council meeting on December 16th. Motion be in order?
Make motion.
Support.
This was made and supported. Any discussion on those minutes? Be you not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We go on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. I don't believe anybody's here other than for items for consideration. Adoption agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes?
Be you not all in...
Need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion?
Support.
Motion made and support. Any discussion? Be you not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Rules, no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have five this evening. The first one is consideration of special event request, commercial house, bibs and brews. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider approving a special event request from commercial house for the third annual bibs and brews event. The owners would like to utilize the city's portion of the municipal parking lot behind commercial house. This will be a one-day event set for March 1st from noon to 4:00 p.m. with a parking lot usage of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to allow for a setup and takedown. Again, they'll be having live music, outdoor games, a chili cook-off and some vendors. They are intending to use the social district for the utilization of serving alcohol. And they would also have requested the use of three or four of the city's burn barrels that we use during the tree lighting event. And they, we did allow that last year as well. Brienne LaPorte is here tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you. Brienne, you like to add to that?
Um, no, I mean, we're just super excited. Third year, we've had a great turnout. Um, we raised a lot of money for the fire department for it. A lot of contests or contestants for the cook-off, we usually get around 10 to 15. So hopefully, we're expecting it to be much bigger this year.
Very good, very good. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event request from commercial house for their bibs and brews event on Saturday, March 1st, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. with vendors, chili cook-off and outdoor music. Support?
Motion made and supported. Any questions, Brienne, while we got her up here?
Just figuring better, right?
Figuring better. I'm excited.
Hope for good weather.
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number two is consideration of proving purchase for the street sweeper. Mr. City Manager?
The city of Richmond's 2008 street sweeper needs replacement. As council's aware, it has been giving us a lot of problems the last year. It is currently inoperable and administration's reluctant to put any additional funds into the vehicle. Uh, the ability to purchase a sweeper was evaluated in March 2024, and at the time, it was determined there was not enough funds for a cash purchase until the fiscal year 2025, '26. As shown in the attached memo, and quotes, the cost of the new sweeper is expected to be $289,500. As of January 6th, 2025, there is $2,206,500 in the DPW equipment replacement fund, which leaves the fund $83,495 short. Uh, so in evaluating this and knowing that we didn't get a lot of the streets swept going into the fall and not purchasing it till July 1st for the '25, '26, we would be even further behind. So we either need to, uh, order this to lock in the price for a July 1st delivery. Uh, if we do that, then we will need to, um, contract out for some street sweeping to keep up on the streets. Uh, if not, another scenario, scenario two that Jim and I have kind of put into this background brief is to take a loan from the city's general fund in the amount of, uh, $83,495. Uh, we did receive word, uh, that there is a street sweeper, uh, available currently. Uh, we could take delivery in, in January. Um, again, uh, we would have to pay back the, uh, general fund from the DPW equipment fund that we believe we could do by, uh, roughly September of, of next fiscal year. Uh, so, uh, depending on which direction council would like to go, I did provide two sets of motions. Uh, the first motion is if we're just gonna lock in the price and get delivery after July 1st. Motions two and two A are if we want to, uh, do a loan from the general fund, um, and, and take delivery now. And Jim is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Is there anything that you'd like to add to that, Jim?
Uh, just that our current sweeper has, has been a maintenance issue. We, of course, hindsight being 2020, we, we thought if we put some money into it, it would easily get us through until we could afford to pay with cash. But that's proven to not be true. Something new seems to happen after we fix one issue. So, and, uh, rental revenue go, currently go, all of it goes into the general fund, and then the general fund monthly or periodically transfers a portion of that rental revenue into the DPW equipment fund. So this, this loan essentially would be, instead of transferring money, we'd hold those payments back to the DPW fund until that, that loan is paid off, so.
Very good. Counsel, ready for a motion? Go right ahead.
I make a motion to authorize the expense of $289,500 for the purchase of an elegant Pelican with the auto lube from McQueen Equipment with funds charged to appropriate line item, DPW acquisition replacement, equipment replacement vehicle acquisition with delivery date scheduled as early as January 2025.
Support?
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion?
I think that's the right way of going is getting it early, especially with the other one down and not needing to put any money into it. I think we're better off just getting rid of that one and moving forward.
That hasn't been very kind to us over the years since we bought it. Uh, so this is a different type of cleaning system?
Correct. So the, the current sweeper is a pure vacuum, is what it's called. So it create, with a fan, it creates a vacuum and it sucks up the material through a tube in the gutter. Uh, we did, we didn't try any pure vacuum machines. There's different, there's a regen air, which is similar to a, a pure vacuum machine that also uses air to kind of pick up material. And then there's a mechanical style sweeper. The Pelican is a mechanical style sweeper, so it, it doesn't use, uh, any air per se. It strictly uses a broom and it shoots it up onto a hop, pushes it up onto a hopper and conveyor belt and that, a conveyor belt, and that dumps it into a hopper. So if we're looking at a level of service, it's not gonna get the fines. But there, the Pelican is the most common street sweeper. From a, a car driving down the road, it's gonna look great. If you were, wanted to get very close into the gutter, you will notice those fines, but, but really, that's insignificant. It's getting the vast majority of the material. It'll be better at picking up, uh, small sticks and stuff that currently we have to get out of the machine. The guys have to get out of the machine and get the sticks because they plug up the, the chute, the tubes. Uh, it'd be better at picking up some leaves. Again, right now, that, that tube wants to get plugged up very easily. And, uh, there are changes in technology from our machine to current pure air machines, but still, we feel this machine would be lower operational costs, lower maintenance. Uh, manufacturers sell these as 20-year or, or longer machines, whereas the pure air or regen air machines, they tell you there's only a 10-year machine. So they are either the same price or to get the appropriate size when they're actually quite a bit more than this Pelican, and yet their life cycle is not as long. So we feel from a cost perspective, cost benefit perspective to the city, this is the best way to go. And the guy, we've tried, we tried six machines, different styles, and the guys all, they definitely liked this machine and they understand the, the value. It's, it's, it drives different, so they know there'll be a little bit of a learning curve there. That was probably the only concern they had, but they're all confident they will be able to figure that out. They're great operators, so, uh, they fully support this purchase.
Very good. Any other comments, questions?
Also, this one's got a lot more maneuverability.
It, it can turn around in the middle of the street. It could turn around in the, in the garage, in the barn if we wanted to. So it is definitely, again, once you get used to turning rate on radiuses and trying to get the, the material in the gutter on a curve, it's definitely easy to turn around. If you say you missed something, you need to circle back without having to go all the way around the block, as an example.
It's a little concerning to me that it doesn't pick up the fines. Uh, we get so much dirt on Main Street especially, with all the traffic that comes through. Um, I, I can't believe that it's not gonna pick up some of it.
It's so, just like if you were sweeping with a broom.
Yeah.
You can get a lot of fines. You get most of that material will get picked up. It just, the vacuum will, will suck up that last little bit that you mainly, now this material would ultimately, if it say rains, that's gonna end up in the gutter. Then the next time you sweep, you're going to pull the vast majority of that out. So it's not gonna be obvious from, uh, like I said, from a vehicle. If you wanted to really inspect it closely, I'm sure you can, you can see that because we witnessed that as we walked, but it was nothing that we felt would be a concern from an aesthetics perspective, for sure.
Okay, good, good, good.
And all the guys that's got all the equipment on it that you need? I mean, there's no, no more bells and whistles?
They, there's, there's nothing that they felt we should have that it didn't have. It's, again, it sweeps, that's, that's its goal. It's got good visibility because of the way it's built, so you can really see very, very well out of the machine. Um, and again, we feel it's going to be a low maintenance machine as far as frequent issues that we may have that they have to take care of, let alone we have to have a company come in. We feel this is gonna be a, a machine that we could have for quite a long time without any significant maintenance expenses.
Yeah, because that other one made, made more of a mess than it.
Yeah.
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 Don't, don't, don't sweep, don't sweep. It's better off not running that other one.
Anything else, counsel? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We need a motion to amend the line item.
Make a motion to amend line item, appropriate line item, DPW equipment replacement vehicle acquisition from $110,000 to $399,500.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Uh, the only thing I would, uh, wonder, it's not really gonna have any negative effect on any other purchases that are planned for our next fiscal year, our '25, '26 fiscal year.
Uh, well, that may be a question for the city manager as far as a loan from the general fund, if there was any issues there. But as far as equipment, no, our intention was to purchase the sweeper in six months based on funding needs. So this will, we, we don't anticipate any purchases in the next fiscal year for that one.
Yeah.
And we anticipate by September, which is really just about three months into the next fiscal, fiscal year, that we'll be able to pay that loan back. So it's not, it's not like we're carrying that loan for several years.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we got a healthy fund balance, as, as we were told, so we should be fine. Any other comments, questions, or motion?
A question, I, I didn't see it. So the existing sweeper, is there any market value for that as far as parts?
So, uh, we, and we didn't include it in the, the agenda item, but there, they did initially offer $10,000 as trade-in, so we may get that. We'll have to confirm that. We may, there's a few, uh, sweeping contractors that we know fix sweepers that we, I will reach out to them, see if there's any value in it more than the 10, and if we feel there is, we would pursue those options.
So it's, it's even possible that the $80,000 loan is really closer to, you know, or $89,000 is really closer to 79. We just don't know that number, so we didn't wanna factor that into the motion at this time.
Anything else, counsel? Be you not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you for all that information that you gave us on this for the last month or two. Uh, item number three is consideration of soil borings, Main Street Water Main Replacement. Mr. City Manager?
The Main Street Water Main Replacement Project is anticipated for construction in the spring of 2025. Uh, the permit, uh, the, the project is within the, uh, MDOT right-of-way, and as a requirement, uh, for the permit, they are requiring soil borings, uh, 10 in total, uh, on the project. So, uh, Jim had reached out and got quotes from all the different companies that will do soil, soil borings, and were recommending, uh, G2.
Very good. Uh, Jim, anything to add to this?
We've used G2 multiple times since I've been with the city for soil borings and for just construction, you know, density inspection type stuff, and we've had no issues with them.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the expense of $12,825 for soil borings on the Main Street Water Main Project by G2 Consulting Group with expenses charged to the appropriate line item and the water fund.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Well, the big discussion would be, what if we find something?
Well, so these are soil borings, which are probably four-inch diameter, just a drilling straight down. We, I guess, if you're saying on the unlikely event that we came across, I don't know what you're anticipating we'd find, but...
Gas tanks. I mean, we found them before. I think we got rid of all of them.
Yeah.
Over the years. But if we were to find contamination, is that gonna be on us, or is there funding possibly to go along with the funding?
Slightly on us.
On us.
Yep.
But we are, unfortunately, we are required to, to take these soil borings, and the intention of them is to, uh, for MDOTs, structurally, they want to confirm that the, the ground is, can support the, you know, there's not gonna be movement from the, when we do a boring underneath the roadway, that kind of thing.
Yeah, okay.
And they are, all but one, I would say, are clearly in a green belt area, which is, uh, unless things have changed in the past, we would hope that it's not, uh, been developed at some point where we'd run across something like that.
Yeah. I think we've hit them all.
All over? Okay.
With the various...
I think we've hit them all.
Oh.
Over the years. We've hit many, and it, I don't think there's any other areas in the community that we haven't hit already that we wouldn't have known that there was more contamination there. So hopefully, we're good.
Yeah.
Otherwise, this kind of...
It had a lot of cost.
Puts us in a position that if they, we're to find something that we don't know about, now we need to take care of that problem. So there is, there is a possible financial issue here.
Absolutely.
It's kind of a crap shoot.
Yeah, kind of like when we do the streetscape. We ran across tanks then, and just unfortunately have to deal with them when you find them.
Yep, yep. Okay. Anything else on this? Be you not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four, consideration of proving city office HVAC repairs. Mr. City Manager?
The municipal offices utilize a hot water boiler for building heat and a rooftop AC unit or RTU for cooling and air handling. Uh, both operate, operations work together to condition the air in this building. Uh, as you may recall, this past end of summer, fall, uh, our air conditioner, uh, finally died up on the rooftop. So, uh, Jim and, Jim has been working with, uh, several different contractors to, uh, get quotes on, uh, replacing the air conditioner, uh, rooftop unit. Unfortunately, as we started to go through that process, we also realized that, uh, along with the, the RTU that was, uh, original to the building in 1994, the computer that controls the boiler and the rooftop is from 2004, it, it no longer really would communicate with the new, uh, rooftop unit. So we had to do both, uh, the rooftop unit and the controls. Um, and so, uh, Jim has met and taken, uh, all of the contractors through this building. Uh, it's done a lot of the legwork to get as close as we can, uh, quotes apples to apples. Uh, certainly, that was a challenge. Um, but, uh, our recommendation is to award the bid to Tony's Heating and Cooling, who's the low bidder, on both the RTU and control updates. Uh, we do anticipate that with any of these quotes, there will be some things that we run across in this building, uh, that will probably incur some additional costs when we do that. You know, as council's aware with this building, we've, that's nothing new to kind of fixing things here. So, um, we do have, uh, a motion here, uh, to award that. Uh, we also have kind of a financial breakdown utilizing somewhat similar to the DPW barn. We put a little more into the general fund, a little more into water sewer, um, but essentially a very similar breakdown to how we broke the, uh, DPW barn extension down. We would ask council that you consider asking Tifa for their, uh, portion, which would be 30%. Um, the motion in the background brief, I apologize, it says $206,450. It should be $206,460. So there's a typo there. Uh, Jim is here. Uh, again, he went through the building with, with the contractors, and both he and I reviewed the, the bids and then put questions back to the contractors, got additional information and answers, and, and this is our recommendation.
Jim, anything to add to this?
Um, it was, it was quite a bit effort City Manager and I went through, and we learned a lot about HVAC through this process. So we've, the city has worked with, uh, the, the low bidder, the recommended bidder, quite a bit. So we're comfortable with, with their work. They've worked at our wastewater plant, has a boiler system there, and recently did some improvements to controls there. Um, the other contractors are all reputable, and we've worked with many of them as well. But, uh, um, the controls, as the city manager said, are old, and we, our expectation is that when this is done, we'll have, uh, a great new AC system in addition to it functioning as it should as far as conditioning. The quotes do include some minor improvements here to this, specifically to this room and the, the back room to try to improve that kind of balance there. One room gets pretty hot, so we're trying to improve that. That is part of, uh, the, these quotes as well.
Very good. Any questions, Jim? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to award City Hall Rooftop AC Unit Replacement Project to Tony's Heating and Cooling, amount of $206,460. The expenses charged in appropriate line items within the general fund, major street, local street, Tifa, sanitary sewer and water funds, and request that the Tifa board consider their portion of the project.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Discussion. So, uh, it's noted in here that, uh, to get the delivery is, uh, 17 weeks out. Are we talking about no air conditioning in this building till, like, June 1st?
June 1st, yes. Yeah, the, the anticipated install date is around June 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it could be warm again early in the spring. Yep.
Yeah. I mean, Memorial Day last year, as I remember, was, uh, very, very warm.
Yep.
And, and this, this unit does not work at all?
Correct.
Okay, so this building's gonna be?
Yep.
Okay. Well, we're probably gonna see a line item, uh, for, uh, fans, possibly.
We bought them in the fall.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, and I just, uh, the staff was very, uh, tolerant, uh, this past fall. We had, as, as you may recall, I'm thinking, okay, we're going in the fall, we'll, we'll live this. I, we thought we would be able to get this ordered a little sooner than we did, but it just, it was a lot of legwork, uh, both on Jim's part, my part, and the contractors to get in here and, and try and figure this out. Um, and so we're unfortunately here ordering it now so that we can get it, get it going. But, uh, yeah, they were, the staff was good on, you know, being willing to set a few fans up and live with it. It was a warm fall.
We may want to think about, uh, moving our meetings.
If, yeah.
You know, over to the community center or something.
Right, right.
You know, um, if it's, gets that warm where, you know, you have people that need to be in air conditioning if they come to the council meeting.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
We certainly can.
Or the odd even, uh, where the council meetings used to be, back in the old, old days. So anyhow, anything else on this? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Let's hope that stuff comes in way before June. Might get lucky, you never know. Item number five, consideration of board appointment, library board. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to consider making an appointment to the, fill the vacancy on the library board. Uh, the, we did receive an application from Heather McAllister, our city clerk, who was the library director in Mount Clement, so has, uh, a library background. Um, we did contact our city attorney to make sure there wasn't issues there. Uh, and, um, we're asking you to appoint her for your consideration is, is Heather's application.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Heather McAllister to the library board for a two-year term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2025.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion on this?
I just have a...
Anybody know her?
We had to do a background check on her.
I have a question on the motion date. Expiration date of June 30th, 2025, shouldn't that be?
It should be to fill the remainder of the two-year.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, you get...
Gotcha, okay.
To get screwed up.
Yeah, correct.
Changeovers, you know, you get one too many people changing over at the same year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate this, Heather. With all your, uh, knowledge and experience working at a library for the, uh, many, many, many years there, we, we're gonna appreciate your experience, especially with the forthcoming addition and, you know, major changes to the, uh, the size especially of our, our building over there. You're more used to a larger library, uh, scenario, and we really appreciate you doing this.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Okay, we'll move on to miscellaneous matters from the city manager, sir.
Uh, we have a lot of projects coming up this spring, and, uh, we've been starting to put those out to bid. Uh, I think they're all due back, uh, early February. Uh, we also did, uh, post the, uh, advertisement for architectural services at the library, and then, uh, Julian followed up and sent out to six that we had identified through the committee and through the joint meeting, uh, to send to as well, and those, that's been done as well, so.
I see you also, it was in the paper this week, um, for the demolition of the house that we purchased.
Yes, very good.
But is it true that, uh, we're still gonna have the, uh, police and fire still have to?
Yes.
They're gonna utilize the, for training?
Yep.
Okay. So what's the anticipation? Any idea? Before spring, you think we'll have it?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Yeah, good, good. Okay. Um, Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
No, thank you.
No, yeah, I thought I'd give you an opportunity.
I appreciate that.
The politician you are. Um, but anyhow, Heather, you just got an appointment, so you're good. I know you are. We're moving on to council comments. Michael?
I just want to, I really, uh, appreciate the article that was in The Voice about all the projects that were coming up that the city manager, um, talked to and explained it all. Um, but just for clarification on the water main replacement, there were some comments about people saying, oh, now you're gonna tear up the road again because that recently got done. So, for anybody who was interested, it's not gonna be the road being tore down. It's the right-of-way and potentially the sidewalk areas, so roads aren't gonna be touched.
It'll be bored.
Bored, yes, so.
It'll be bored, yeah. Dennis?
Oh, I'm good.
Good. Jim?
Nothing nightmare.
Lee?
Nothing, thank you.
John?
Nothing tonight.
Rob?
All set.
Very good. We'll go to the calendar. I hope everybody had a great holiday season. The town looked great, uh, again. Um, and then there were some complaints about, you know, the, not all the lights, uh, working on Main Street. That is not on the city of Richmond. That is, that is on Edison that we pay each month to make sure that our plugs work on those poles. Um, and there was quite a number of them that were knocked out, especially over the weekend. My understanding is administration is looking into that, uh, to try to end that problem.
We're, we're working with, uh, Edison to try and get those replaced. Uh, their subcontractor was in last week and was working on them when our DPW went through and reset them. There was, I think, all but three did reset, but we have a map that we've given to Edison that quite a few of them, it's the same ones that are tripping every time, so, you know, I think they're getting older.
You told us before, it was unbelievable. How old are those, some of those poles now? Twenty-some?
Twenty, 24, 25 years old down by Old City Hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's no wonder, but, yeah.
No, it's very frustrating on everyone's part. And I know, uh, Steve Gray stopped and talked to them. talked to them last week when they were in town, saying, hey, even though you might be able to get it to work, some of these that have been problematic are, you know, as soon as you leave, it's going to trip again.
Trip again.
If you don't replace it, so.
And by the way, we'll be taking down those decorations this Sunday at 8:00 a.m. If you'd like to volunteer, call City Hall here and let us know that you'd like to volunteer your time. So hopefully the weather's not too bad. It would have been awfully cold this Sunday if we would have taken, taken them down yesterday. But hopefully we have better, a little bit warmer weather. We go to the calendar. Today being January 6, Recreation Board meeting will be happening tomorrow right here at City Hall at 7:00. The Planning Commission and BZA meetings, there is nothing on those agendas, so those meetings are canceled for this Thursday. Library Board will meet on the 13th at 5:30 at the library. Cable Committee, Commission will be meeting Tuesday at 6:30 right here at City Hall, and I'm assuming the EDC is meeting? I haven't, okay. EDC will be meeting on the 15th here at City Hall, also at 7:00. Two weeks from tonight will be the quarterly workshop meeting that council will hold at 5:30 right here at City Hall, and then go into its regular monthly meeting at 7:00, returning if necessary after the regular meeting is over with. Tifa will meet on the 22nd at 7:00, and that's starting to fill our New Year calendar up already. So is there anything else that we need to add? Well, we have some, of course, we have Lois Wagner Memorial Library is having a winter puzzle competition. That is Saturday, June 18th and February the 15th. It's a 10:00 a.m. check-in. It's $5 per team. It's highly competitive. So I don't know how they put those puzzles together as fast as they do. At my house, it takes like a week, you know? They're doing it in a couple hours. For more information there, call our library at 727-2665. The auditorium, the odd, as we refer to it, on Main Street is starting another new event. It is drop-in volleyball. It actually starts, I believe, yeah, tomorrow morning from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. It is drop-in volleyball. We have new nets and everything, and we're looking forward to that as another great event at the odd. Battle of the Badges. This is a blood drive that's sponsored by the Richmond Lennox EMS. It's going to be held at Richmond Township Hall. I believe that this is going to be the EMS versus our police department? Did I read that someplace else? John?
Police fire an EMS or...
Is it, is it all of them?
I think fire also. Blood drive's open to everyone.
Okay, yes. So that is happening on January 24th. It's a Friday from 11:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. Richmond Township Hall. Craft Supply Swap is going to be held at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library on January 25th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You can drop off any unwanted but still usable craft supplies to the library and, and receive a ticket for a 10:00 a.m. early entry to the swap, so they have a way of marketing their thing here to get more crafts. The regular public will be allowed to come in at 11:00 a.m. It's not, donating is not required to participate, and there is no cost for the items. So again, any questions there, 727-2665. Sounds like fun. Is there anything else we need to add to the calendar? If not, Michael?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.